Meeting will come to order, please. First thing in the item is public comment. If anybody would like to make a public statement, raise your hand. You'll be recognized. Come to the podium, state your name, and state your address. And you have about three minutes. I'm not seeing anybody enthusiastic, jumping up and down. We'll move to the next thing. Number three, discretionary preservation easement public hearing is now open and associated with 34 High Road map 22-5-0. Anybody speaking for this particular year? Please come forward.
Thank you. Dan Jennison, Freddie Ford High Road and Lee, and my husband Charlie. I wrote some notes down this afternoon and thought I would just give a little bit of the background history of the house because it's a historic preservation easement, the barn, because they're together. And then a little bit of the story about how we are trying to preserve that history.
Thank you.
So our house and barn are both clearly visible. They're right on High Road, which is one of the six scenic roads, designated scenic roads in generally. Our original barn on our property was built in 1803, at the same time the original house was built on the property. And then it was doubled in size by the addition of a barn that was brought from Dover in 1849, at the same time our house doubled in size. New owner, bigger family. And the property came into our family, my husband's family, in 1888. Charlie's great-grand uncle, Amos Piper, purchased the property from a Cartland descendant, or actually his heirs, consortium of his heirs. So it's been a goal of ours to, you know, someday restore that barn. And then nature and a set of circumstances beyond our control moved our agenda up and changed it considerably. Our barn roof collapsed in February of 2015 under the weight of three and a half feet of packed snow and ice that February where there were these, you know, huge snowstorms every weekend. And as the winter progressed, the damage that had occurred continued. There was no way to get in there, no way to access it, and it was too dangerous at that point. Our insurance company, we actually had insurance on the property, sent in an appraiser and adjuster within a couple of weeks, but he couldn't even get into the barn or walk around the barn because the snow was so high. So they had to come out again in May when the snow finally melted and take a look at the property. And then we spent six months negotiating with them over being able to truly do the job restoring the barn with the kind of workmanship that was done when the barn was put up, which is not anything that was their concern, but it was ours. So we finally were able to talk them into covering the cost of rebuilding. And we hired Aaron Sturgis, Company Preservation Timber Framing from Burwick, to do the restoration work. But by the time he was able to get into the barn, it had deteriorated so much from water damage from snow melting that there wasn't a whole lot that was salvageable. So what we did was buy the frame of the barn from the Brock Farm in South Burwick, which was within two years, the same age as our original barn, and restored that. And actually, we're able to include some of the beams and timbers from our original barn in that, as well as new siding, new roof, new foundation. But what we have is an 1805 timber frame barn on the original location that the other barns were. And we made a true effort to go at this with the idea of historic preservation so that there would be something on that property that represented the original history of the property. Before I thought, before I, actually, I was not going to apply for the preservation easement until our contractors said, "You should do that. You should think about that. Why don't you call Beverly Thomas over at Preservation, New Hampshire Preservation Alliance and see what she thinks?" And I did. And she said, "Well, old barns were put together and combined all the time, rebuilt and what have you." And we had actually already a history of that when that was done in 1849. So we decided to put together the request. We're not done. The actual structure, the foundation, was rebuilt. The barn was, the timber frame was put up last May, and it took all summer to, you know, put together all the rest of the work and do the siding and do the roofing and all that. But there still is a great deal of work to be done inside the barn, finish work, even down to putting railings on the stairs and around the loft, replacing the electrical and plumbing that were there when Charlie's grandfather was a dairy farmer on the property. He wanted to be a usable piece of property. Knowing that we're, you know, not going to be there forever, we'd like to have it be the most authentic and usable piece of building that we can put together that's, you know, practical agriculturally as well. It's a small piece of property, but even we have plans to be doing organic farming and stuff and can use that space. Is there anyone else to see if I can... So what do we still need to do? We need to do the electrical, we need to do railings, plumbing. Oh, the carriage house that was, it was physically attached to the barn. And when the barn collapsed, it took part of our carriage house, which is the same age, the end wall, and that still needs to be repaired. Also, when the old, you know, when the wreckage of what was taken was taken out, backhoe also took out a whole section, an eight-foot section of fence that goes along the retaining wall because the entrance level to the barn, it was one of those barns that was built into the side of the hill. And so the retaining wall is there, but the fence isn't so that anybody could back their car over or children could run over. So we need to repair fencing, too. So those are the kinds of improvements and continued restoration that we have in mind to try to keep that property upstanding and being improved.
Well, thank you for the history and the update and the restoration of the bond. Question from the board?
What was that? I've seen it.
No. Any comments and questions from the public? Thank you. Therefore, I move to approve the Jennison application for discretionary preservation easement of the bond for a ten-year term and a 75% reduction in assessed value and to authorize the town administrator to work with the town council, the property owner, on drafting the easement document. Wait a second.
Thank you.
Second. Any further discussion? Hearing them all in favor?
Aye.
Please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you so much. Next item, Mr. Stevens, highway supervisor cab, chassis, and equipment recommendations. There we go. Love those pictures.
Did you get tired of talking about this truck yet?
I got some enthusiasm here.
Yeah. I don't know if you all caught the email that Slem and Bugby sent around about the extended warranty or whatever. Did you get the spreadsheet that I sent afterwards? I haven't really had time to figure out the difference between the five and the seven years. Just had to do it. Took too quick. I think it's about $3,000 between the extended warranty, between the five and the seven. The transmission only, we'll go, they'll only do it for five years. Very, very little problem with those transmissions. So that's the warranty. Other choices? Well, first, we got to decide if we're going to go with Western Star. Two Slav men went up the mountain of demonstrations. All three of us highway guys went. We looked at all the trucks that had bid, the example of all the trucks that bid, and we pretty much, I think we're all in agreement, so the Western Star was kind of more old-fashioned truck, built like a real truck, very little, the least amount of plastic, easiest to work on, most simple design of what was available. If I missed anything?
You concur?
For those of you intended?
No, I think, I think that's the, of the choices that were available. I think that was the best one for us.
So I think the Western Stars probably are a truck of the choice. The big problem we have is the engine.
The engine?
We got the Cully out.
What's that?
We got the Cully out.
Oh, yeah.
I suspect that's going to be a very heated discussion.
Come on. So personally, we're divided in the highway department. We don't really care, as you know, we have both red and yellow.
You don't really care.
We don't really. I personally think the yellow sticks out a little better if you're trying to, from a safety point of view.
Which one, I'm sorry?
The yellow, I think, might, might show up. But the red isn't bad either. The green, I think, blends right into the, I think, our back road, you have a hard time to say.
Yeah, it looks like grass. Yeah, it does.
So any preference from the board?
I like the green. The green looks better with the body. So just in terms of looks, I like the green. And I, and I suspect in terms of seeing it, you guys have lights and strobes, so if they can't see lights and strobes, then they probably shouldn't be on the road to begin with, so, but that's my thought.
Well, they shouldn't, but they are.
Well, we can't speak to that.
Well, actually, I kind of agree with Mr. Bugby at this point. That was my favorite color. It was green when I first saw it. I wasn't thinking about safety issues. I just looked at it, and it looked so romantic, I figured we'd go with that, you know. Well, Mr. Brown?
Yellow. To put a green truck, to put a green truck with men working around it on Cartland Road in the middle of the summer, I think is difficult relative to just the visual of seeing the truck, seeing the people, et cetera. I think yellow, yellow or red is going to be the safest way to go. Otherwise, it's camouflage. That's what it is. I mean...
Well, in the snow time, in the wintertime, when there's snow and green, it'll stick out, too. So I guess we can't have them use that truck on Cartland Road during the summertime.
So we're yellow.
I'm, I'm partial to green. Well, who's saying sleepover if you're just calling? No.
How about the blue?
No.
No, not blue.
Well, I was going to let Denise make the choice, but now I will not.
Anyway, this is, like you're thinking about it, if you want to change your mind or if you want to go with green. This is a truck we went up to very early this morning up to Bitterford. I'll pass it around, but, not Bitterford, Kinnamun, excuse me. And they've only had it for a short while. But that's what painted wheels will look like, as opposed to all the other pictures have the aluminum wheels.
Maybe we should ask the chief.
Wheels? About the wheels?
No.
All right.
Which chief?
Chief of police. What's your vote? Next is going to be chief, next is going to be chief of the fire department. What's your vote?
Red.
Yellow. Yellow. Actually, at this point, is that I do agree, safety plays a role, so I'm going to go with the yellow.
Two yellows?
Two yellow, one green.
I'm sticking with the greens.
That's right. Two to one, that's all you need. Yellow. There you go.
Okay, here's some other pictures. This is the Western, I tried to get a comparison to the Western Star engines. This is the Cummins engine, and says which side it's, I can't remember. And this is the Detroit engine, and it's the same style truck. They're actually different trucks. It's just a different side of those. This is a, on the top is the International truck with a Cummins engine, on the bottom is the Western Star with the same engine. And you can see much easier it is to be able to work on the engine. Same thing on the other side of the truck. The last picture is, this is the plow and wing setup that we would be getting, or we get out anyways. This is, they cut the same thing as Kinnamun. Nothing, part of the plow frame is there, the other part stays on the truck, so we've got it all back. Okay, we saw the color, the color is yellow.
Color is yellow.
Wow. Wheels, aluminum wheels or steel?
Aluminum wheels. I got to win something here.
Aluminum wheels. You got it.
Yeah, you never get them any cheaper if you want to get them.
Yeah, we're going to go with aluminum wheels.
You can always go back to steel pretty, fairly cheaply. Aluminum wheels?
Uh huh.
Okay. Engine?
Yes.
As, as my emails stated, we had one from Cummins come down, a sales rep, a troubleshooter. She answered a lot of our questions. She explained that the new Cummins engine, that's, we can't find any of, it's coming, came out in 2017, and it's really the same engine that's in the fire tanker, with very minor modifications, but it's got a much simpler aftertreatment and they hope, they hope better aftertreatment system instead of two big round things. It's got one big round thing after treatment. So we feel, then we went to Bitterford today. That was the older model, well, it's, you know, it's a 2016, the ISL nine instead of the nine L. But they're, they've only got 350 miles, but Pete drove it around. Let him drive it around town. He had a hard time keeping burning the tires off. He's empty. It's got, seemed to have plenty of power, more than anything we got by the wheels of it. Quite quiet, starts right up nice, sits in aisles quite nicely, so. It's really a toss-up. It's, you know, it's, when you figure the extra warranty that the Detroit costs, it's still, even though I get them down a thousand, it's still over $10,000 extra for that engine, so. It's kind of a, it's a proven engine, but it will be, if you ever have to rebuild it, it will be more expensive than the Cummins because it's a bigger engine. I found one site online, a garage out in Montana that advertised different levels of rebuilding diesels. The DD-13, a complete overhaul, pull it out of the truck and complete the overhaul, put it back, you know, it's $26,000. Not a, not a cheap engine to rebuild. But, you know, I doubt, if something catastrophic happened, the town, we would never have to rebuild it. So that's, like you say, we feel more comfortable about the Cummins than we did. I do like that it's 950 pounds lighter, which is another thousand pounds of load we can carry legally. So I don't, what your thoughts are, I know you're all for power.
I like power.
You like power?
I like power.
You got two powers here, so there you go.
If you noticed, if you looked at the torque shot, they've got 1600 RPM. We do have the same torque. Horsepower is slightly less, but it seems to be pretty parallel horsepower lines.
Well, I took advantage, my friend was over here racing, and he stayed with me this weekend, and he has a trucking firm, and they buy Peter Volt's, but now they're buying Western Star, same company. And I asked him these particular questions. So he has a full-time tech there, and he works on these trucks all the time. And he said, his recommendation, he, he has worked on the Cummins nine, and he's seen it, but he would go with the Detroit engine. He says it's not going to be working as hard as the Cummins in terms of doing stuff. I know that they're more trucking versus what you guys do, so it's a little bit different. But that's why he asked me to have you check out the warranty, the extra warranty. And as you can see, the, the warranty to go for five for seven years is almost like twice. There's reason for that because after someplace in there, their experience has been with the diesel, that that's when things start to go. So either you pay the $2,400 or whatever it costs to fix it, and it's going to be more to fix it. So that's why he asked, oh, that's why he said that, and that's why I asked you. So hopefully we can consider that. But I would vote for the Detroit, not for the extra power, but for its dependability and its usability.
I understand.
A lot of that dependability and reliability is because of the extra power. Just, just virtue of the fact that it has the power, it's not working as hard every minute that it's turning as the Cummins is, so.
Our only concern was that it wouldn't work hot enough to keep the exhaust after we cleaned out. That was our spot. I guess we just have to take it out one more device until I'll...
Slow it down, bud.
Put a hope to it.
Slow it down.
So I guess, it sounds like you're, you're all favoring the Detroit, so that kind of makes, leads me to believe that we should go with a cross memberless body, which saves a thousand pounds, buys a thousand dollar vehicle.
So will it look like that K-Bucks? It'll look like that?
Well, hopefully I won't have that space in there. That is...
But the hoist is in the front, not...
Right. The hoist is in the front.
Okay.
So it will have some space, but probably could take a foot of that space out. Probably have to have a foot in there for a gas between the cab, which isn't all bad because you can look out your back window and see between the body and the cabs. Just makes the truck longer, which is, even if, even if the body was uptight, it'd be a lot longer than the trucks we get now. I'll have to keep it on the straight and narrow, I guess.
And my friend did say, they, they buy both, and they're switching to the Western Stars because they like them better than their Cummins.
Almost, almost anybody you talk to, as you say, Western Star, well, is a nice truck. You know, I'm kind of pleased that it's within reason, within grasp, because it's, I don't care what you look, you know, two, two screws, and you can fold the whole instrument panel right down, hinge, and you take out a gauge or whatever, as opposed to some of the other makes, where you got to buy a whole instrument panel for 10 times as much.
And the other thing I spoke to you about is the virtual technician. So instead, it includes it for the first two years.
Right.
So I assume in years three plus whatever, that you guys could just buy it out of the offering.
You buy it out of the offering, but...
My friend said that's invaluable because the truck is having the communication with the technicians, so they can diagnose and say, "Oh, you need to do this," or also give you a heads up, "You've got this particular thing that's happening, maybe you should go take it out."
They have a bad day, they can stop you reading the water, too. I don't want that highway truck anywhere.
But it sounded like, it sounds like it's a good service, so...
Yeah, I mean, especially for free, at least try it out, if it works out good, you know.
Definitely.
$200 isn't a...
Messy engine.
Isn't that something? So I guess we're getting down on the list, yes. So now we just got to figure out warranty. You want to go with seven on the five or none?
Absolutely not, none.
No.
I would like us to consider going to the five. It's 27, $2,725 more. And the thing is, if something goes without, wrong with that engine, you're going to spend way more than $2,725 to fix it.
It's going to, it's going to go right away. Do you need seven or five?
Seven.
Seven.
It's $2,725 extra.
Yeah, so go with the seven.
Okay. I think that's...
So we're going with the seven and the warranty, the Detroit engine, aluminum wheels, and a yellow cab.
Uh, let's see.
Any cross memberless body?
Yes.
Yes, unless I find out some information, tip up when I go up there. It makes me say no, but that's, that's our intention. So everything, most of the other things, the fender monomeras were pretty less, weren't having anything, the trailer brake controller, it's easier for them to put it in, electric brake controller. Backup camera, I think that's what was, was...
Absolutely. And you, who puts on the strobes and stuff? Is that something...
They're going to do it all, all the lights and everything. Should be. The only thing we should have to do is come in with a fire extinguisher and everything. I think we're going to buy a set of flares, but it has a flare box in it.
And the cost to put the seal on the side, do they do that, too, or...
We have, we have two of those great stops.
Okay, so you just...
We could do that. Two-way radio is going to be swapped out, but it's supposed to have a place for it, so just have to find a place in the antenna.
Can you give us some indication in terms of who the primary operator of this vehicle will be?
None of us want to take a, that expensive a truck out, so.
You're going to take pictures of it, isn't it correct?
I'm guessing it'll probably be worn, but...
There we go.
I probably owe me a six months or less when it comes back. Time it gets done.
So, excuse me, because I'm trying to keep track. Can you clarify for me what the additional cost is to increase the warranty?
I didn't, to tell you the truth, I didn't have time to add it all.
Well, the only thing we really changed was the Detroit. It went from five to seven years. The transmission is only five.
You're trying to get something, something for the warranty.
For the vote.
You're trying to get a total.
Trying to figure out what the total is.
And it may be something, yeah, I, we went back and forth on a few things, you know, told him 1,500, take that off for the airbags. I hope that's right. I think he'll make it right because he wants to sell one in this area pretty bad.
So I'm sorry, again, I'm looking at your, your warranty spreadsheet, and at the bottom it says the Western Star cabin chassis.
Yep.
And then there's a series of numbers across the bottom.
Right. 4,065 was a five-year.
Right.
And the seven-year is 6,500, so they went with the seven-year. So just that there would be the difference between 4,065 and 6,500.
Okay, so just the difference between those two numbers?
That's just for the, the transmission's the same. They went with the Detroit engine, so the difference between 5175 and 2450.
So the difference in the warranties is $1,895?
Good amount.
You're just looking at the cab and chassis warranty. There's also the transmission and the engine. I just didn't, I just didn't get time to run them out. My questions were kind of late.
Hey, I only got his conversation. I don't want to bother you on the weekend.
Oh, you couldn't.
Why not?
Oh, no, that's, that's rude.
I'm on call 24/7.
That's just rude.
I don't.
I respected your privacy on the weekend, Mr. Stevens.
Anytime you can call me a weekend, I have no problem with that. I don't want to talk to you all in the general area.
So I think we're pretty much in agreement with him at this point.
Well, except for the color. I'm still...
I know. I feel sorry about that, but...
That's okay.
We're going to move on anyway.
That's fine.
But you got the aluminum wheels.
Well...
Well, I wanted that, too, anyway, so...
Yeah, you wanted that, too.
Okay, on the engine, it's 2725. Transmission's the same.
Well, I have a question. On this warranty spreadsheet, you show that the five-year is 4065.
Yes.
But you show 4605 on the, on the other spreadsheet.
Yeah, it's, I don't know what to say about, these are the numbers you gave me today, so...
Can we put the number just a little bit higher than what we think it is, and that'll give you guys some flexibility?
That's what I'm hoping for.
And then we can just move on? Because I'm not worried if it's a little bit more or a little bit less.
I just need a general...
Well, here's what I think it is. Do you want to add something to that?
181,403.
Yeah. Because we're adding to the 176783, correct, Randy?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, just the warranty, should be the only thing. I have 5628 extra for the seven-year over the five.
Yeah, I think it's a little less than that, because I'm working off of 4,0605.
Except we run at 182, you should have...
I believe so.
Want to a P?
Yeah. Let's go with that. All right, let's go with that. FY authorized a highway supervisor entered into agreement with the McDevitt truck to purchase a new Western Star forty-four seven, forty-seven hundred cabin chassis. Per their submitted bid with the following options, a yellow cab, aluminum wheels, Detroit engine thirteen, a cross memberless body, but you're going to check that up when you get there. Seven year warranty and a backup camera and any other small necessities that are required. At a total cost to be capped at one hundred and eighty-two thousand and to withdraw SED funds from the highway equipment capital reserve fund.
Second, I do have a question. That's all coming from McDevitt? I thought Viking.
No, Viking, we have to do, yeah, that's right.
So the total is not one hundred and eighty-two then?
No, because they deploy with something else, huh?
We've got to take sixty-three.
Yeah, there's a separate one about the.
But the purchase from McDevitt's not one eighty-two. The total is one eighty-two.
Should be one eighty-two minus sixty-three thousand seven eighty-five.
So sixty-two.
Separate.
It's not right. It's going to add up, see, too many options here.
So I withdraw my second.
And I agree. It falls flat.
Sixty-four two fifty-five is what they got, you've got to take away from the one eighty-two.
Let her do the numbers for me. Because the pile and the dump is Viking?
Viking, yeah, Viking, C.I.V.E.S.
C.I.V.E.S., I think they say.
C.I.V.E.S.
One seventeen, seven sixty-five.
Well, I came up with one seventeen, seven forty-five.
So let's go at one eighteen.
One seventeen eight.
So let's make it one eighteen.
One eighteen.
Because the Viking price is pretty much, that's, there shouldn't be any change.
Yeah.
And then actually.
I'll figure that out.
You have the other one here for the Viking, right?
Yeah. But I'm just, some of the, the options go with the other one.
Oh, red cab doesn't go with the other one, Detroit doesn't go with it. Seven year warranty doesn't, backup camera, just.
The backup camera does.
I guess I should have separated those out.
All right, help me as I move along. I authorize the highway supervisor entered into agreement with the McDevitt truck to purchase a new Western Star forty-seven hundred cabin chassis. Per their submitted bid with the following options, yellow cab, aluminum wheels, Detroit engine, warranty, seven years. Cross member with its body to be determined when you get up there, make a decision on that.
Well, that's, that's in the other bid.
That's the other one.
Other vehicle and the backup cameras with the other one?
Yes.
All right. At a total cost of up to a hundred and eighteen thousand and withdraw said funds from the highway equipment capital reserve fund.
Second.
What are you laughing for, Mr. Brown?
He's enjoying this.
Thank you. It'll be your turn someday. Hearing no one to discuss, and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, thank you. I'm going to pass that directly over there now. Let's deal with this other issue. So what have we got for funds for the Viking seats of Maine for bid to purchase? Which is the wing, right?
Plow wing, center, dump body.
Yeah, with the light controls, backup camera accessories.
Central hydraulics.
So it's a hundred and eighty-two minus the hundred and eighteen, right?
Sixty-three, sixty-four.
Sixty-four to thirty-five, I guess.
So let's say sixty-five thousand.
Sixty-five. Sound good, man?
Sixty-five.
I authorize a highway supervisor entered into agreement with the Viking seats of Maine per their bid to purchase a new eleven-foot plow, eleven-foot wing, plow wing hitch. With central hydraulics, stainless steel dump body and stainless steel sander with all the lights, controls, backup camera accessories included. Cross member or cross memberless body to be determined by highway supervisor at the time of ordering and/or with the following options. Are there any other options? At a cost of sixty-five thousand dollars, SED funds being taken from the highway equipment capital reserve fund. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, thank you.
I know why I like used trucks.
I know you like used trucks.
What decision to make, yes or no? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And can I thank you and your staff for all the work that you did?
A lot of work.
That's extra stuff that you didn't have to do. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Roger Rice, transfer station operator, NRR A award.
We received this at the most recent convention about two weeks ago. And it's because we are, oops, fairly involved with NRR A. We, we use them more than some of the other towns, so we have a flat fee that we pay of two hundred and fifty or something per year. So we get more back by doing more programs, so we ended up with an award because we get so many programs. That's anyway the way I see it, but, so.
Well, thank you so much. We appreciate all your hard work. Thank you, thank you. Got a picture for the ECR? We got it.
Peter Armstrong, treasurer, Jenkins Lane's homeowners association meeting room request.
Hey, I'm Lou Grandin, I'm the president of the association. Jenkins Lane is now called Owl Lane. But we have, we have our own association for maintaining the road. It's a, it's a nonprofit association. I don't know if you want to see this or anything, but anyways, just to prove that we are a nonprofit and approved by the state and everything.
Thank you.
So we've been maintaining the road for about forty years. It's not always in very good shape, especially this year, lots of potholes. But we usually have a yearly meeting. Attendance can be kind of low, so someone had an idea that maybe if we had it here, we could boost their attendance. Maybe it'll go down, I don't know. But we just thought we would try it, so we applied to use the room one night. It's June twenty-eighth, seven to nine. We probably would have twenty people tops. And so we probably, we have twenty-seven, there's twenty-seven homeowners, landholders. And it might be up to a hundred people that live down, down that, that way. So we, you know, we're all in town. So we're just requesting to use a room for one night, basically.
Anybody else requesting that room?
Meaning on this, the particular date that they want? Last time we checked, it was available, but.
Yeah, it's only once a year, so.
College questions?
Is it a public meeting? Can anybody come? Or just association members or?
I think it's just, I can't imagine anybody else would want to come, but we could open it, open it to the public.
It is a private association. I just want to point out that this may open up the door for other private uses of the safety conflicts.
I don't have any problem with it.
Liability issues?
They're also asking for an insurance waiver.
I can't see anything drastic happening. Just sit around and talk about the road.
Just a meeting, you're talking, right? No cooking, no hot dogs, no hamburgers?
No, 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 no.
I just want to make sure.
Yeah.
Mr. Brown?
We're pretty cheap, we don't provide food.
I guess the only issue I'd have over the insurance thing, if they're not going to, if they're asking to be relieved from that would be. Just don't we have some kind of piece of paper or something for, if they don't want to sign that or want to be relieved of that for some kind of indemnification or that they would sign?
I think we.
If they drip and fall down the stairs.
That's what this is.
Is that what they got?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we applied for that.
Okay. All good.
Okay, then I move to grant the authorization, the vantage for the room on what day is it?
June twenty.
From when?
Seven to nine. Probably won't last that long, but.
Give me a second.
Take it.
Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next item is select board application for open school board positions. Town administration, how many applications have we got?
We received four.
Can everybody get a chance to take a look at what's on it? Do you have a recommendation?
Some other candidates are here, could we hear a few words from each of them?
Absolutely.
If they're willing.
If they're willing, then. Come up and say a few words, raise your hand, you'll be identified. Please, sir.
Good evening, members of the board, town administrator, Mr. Paul. My name is James Lonano, I live at, sorry, I almost started pretending I was in court. I was about to say I represent somebody. I represent me.
Yourself on this case?
I reside at Fifty-Eight Fox Garrison. I've been a resident of the town of Lee for probably about two and a half years since December of twenty fourteen. Originally from New Hampshire, from New York City originally, but my wife's from Dover, so we moved here when our second child was about to be born. We have two children, one of whom is just about to turn seven in July. He's a student at Masway, he's in first grade. And I have a daughter who's two and a half, who when she is old enough will attend Masway Elementary as well. We're here for the long haul and Lee, we love it here. I never imagined I could ever live in a place so beautiful and secluded in some ways as, as Lee, but I love it. And just in two years in the school, I've seen what an amazing school district it is. And to be able to be a part of working with other members of the board to promote the school board and to do what's right and providing programs while maintaining fiscal responsibility to the taxpayers, I think is a noble cause and something I'd like to be involved with. My son has benefited from special education services, so I have vested interest in making sure that the school district has what it needs to do it. Provide, you know, fulfill its mission, Dr. Morris, providing a solid public education for every student in the district. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else would like to say a word, sir?
Brian Sisneros, two hundred Wathie Falls Road. I've been a resident of Lee since two thousand and three. Took a year and a half to rent the house in Durham before I moved back here to Lee again because we love the town. So you probably know my wife, she's in here every day. But I have two kids in the school district. My youngest son started in the PEP program when he was three. He's now in, just finishing second grade, going into third over at Masway. My daughter is just finishing eighth grade. She's been in the school since kindergarten and been in special education since second grade. So I see the value of the school district. One thing I have learned about the school district in all my years is they truly, people really, they moved to this town because it's a school district, you know? It's because the value that it brings as far as, we have some outstanding teachers, we have outstanding special ed. I've worked hands-on with special ed staff here and they've been outstanding. Teachers working with my daughter through her health issues have been, I couldn't imagine that happening in a lot of other school districts and parents have told me the same. I do have an MBA in finance, that's our background, I work for an accounting firm, I'm the director of development, so my goal is to go out there and help other people, especially nonprofits. It's one of our specialties, become fiscally responsible and make, make good financial decisions for the future. So I think I would fit in nice, I've met some of the school board members, I know some of them. I think I would kind of mesh well with them because I believe in the same things. I believe in not only looking forward to, looking out for the, for the students in the school district, but also for the taxpayers as well. Because that's, that's part of the responsibility as well. Your job as a school board member is to make tough decisions. I made tough decisions on a regular basis and not always popular, but you know, you've got to do what's best for the people of, of who you're representing for. So I would appreciate your support.
Brian Sisneros, thank you very much. Anybody else? Please.
Hi, I'm Ann Wright, I live at Ten Thornton Lane in Lee. And I was on the school board before, so I think a one-year thing would be perfect to have somebody who has a little bit of experience, maybe who knows the school district as well as how to be on a board, the right to know laws, et cetera. And can just come in and represent Lee and residents of Lee in an appropriate way for the year until we have the election next March. I have two children, one has went through kindergarten all the way through, he's in college now, here in our school district. And I have a daughter who's a freshman at West River High School. And I think it's important for the school district and for the school board to be cognizant of the tax, you know, our high taxes here in Lee. But maintain the strong school district that we count on that why people move into our town. You know, our special education program, et cetera. We need to maintain what that has, but we also need to be aware of the fact that our taxes are very high. So balancing that is, I've been through three budget seasons with the school board and I know how that process works, so. You know, I would just be, I'd be happy to enjoy, I think, being part of Florida for another year. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anybody else? I think we'll probably have to discuss this a little bit more. I think we'll probably table it for the discussion later on. I thank you for coming forward and speaking, I appreciate that very much. Town administration.
Thank you. As I think they do every year, the co-op is asking whether we want to vote for three members to the board of directors. I mean, I think in the past, the board has passed on taking advantage of this, but I didn't want to just file it away without asking if the board wanted to do anything.
I would support us passing on this honor and special privilege at this time, but that's just me.
And I would agree with you at this point. I guess we don't need your comment, two to one.
I would like to hear the select.
Okay. I assume the comment like that means an approval, thank you very much.
Next.
At the board's direction, I met with members of the governing board of the Lee Church on Friday. Mr. Baker and Mr. Duval. Mr. Baker is, I think, the chair of the governing board and Mr. Duval is in charge of facilities. So they, I gave them a copy, obviously of all the material, the purchase and sales, the various accompanying documents, Mr. Tappens. I want to call it a sketch, it's more than a sketch, more than a sketch, less than a survey.
Skravik.
Yeah. So their governing board meets the third Monday of the month, so that'll be June, two weeks from now. And then if the board decides to recommend it, then it would go to a vote of the entire congregation. If the governing board decides for whatever reason that they don't want to sell the property, then it does not go to the entire congregation. So they can schedule a special meeting of the congregation. The board suspects that they won't make a decision in June and that they will probably push it to their July meeting. And if they have obviously any questions or want to amend anything, they'll let me know and then I'll let the board know. It is likely that no vote of the congregation, if it's going to come to a vote of the entire congregation, will happen before September, so.
Thank you.
That's, that's all the time we have this season. That's, that's, all the time we have this season.
That's all we have.
So, sounded too fancy to be John's fault. I presented the proposals that we received for general assessing services at the last meeting, the board wanted an opportunity to review those, so, once again, I'm just asking to see whether the board's made a decision relative to the general assessing services for fiscal 18, the contract that we have right now with municipal resources expires the end of June. Municipal resources submitted the lowest cost proposal. Granite Hill was second lowest, but they would require us to perform all of the data entry, which we appreciate not having to do. So I'm wondering if at this time the board's ready to move on this?
I read all those and I'm, I'm in concurrence with you, the current contractor is sufficient, I think they had the best price, they've done it for many years for us, and I'm comfortable with continuing.
And I agree as well. Therefore, I move to authorize the town administrator to enter into a contract with municipal resources for general assessing services for, for the year 2018.
Fiscal year 2018.
Fiscal 18.
Second.
I'm waiting for a second.
A second.
Is that what, I didn't hear a second.
He did.
I thought it was kind of like a rolling front, I wasn't...
It was a little mumbled.
A little mumbled, but we got through it, okay. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, thank you very much.
A few weeks ago, months ago, weeks ago, the board asked that I draft a merit pay increase policy, if you will. So that's what you have in the agenda packet, I did provide a copy of it to department heads and asked for their input, they all seemed to be fine within, although if the board was to adopt this or something like it, one thing that we need to clarify is whether it will apply in its entirety to the police and fire departments, as you know, they are unique and they have their own evaluation system, so that's just something that we need to clarify.
Yeah, I read it over in quite detail, it's, it's quite detailed, it's extensive, I mean, some of the parts are applicable to some individuals and not to others at this point, but I, I think it shows merit, what I liked about it was the protocol layout, just saying you have to do the first, then this, then this, it follows through, so I'm pretty comfortable.
All right, in terms of the chiefs?
Will Gunnar.
Chiefs head, okay.
Well, I mean, it could apply to the chiefs themselves, but you may want to do something different or allow the two chiefs to continue with what they're doing for their employees, but that would be a discussion to have with the chiefs.
Well, I think we should probably have a discussion, you know, if you'd like to have it now or at some time.
Are you ready to discuss that?
Sure.
Please come forward.
We did have a brief discussion about this, are the evaluations that we use are job-specific, this is more of a generalized form, so, you know, I'd like to continue using our form because it does address each individual, it breaks down every aspect of their job, from report writing to patrol, to arrests, to demeanor, physical appearance, physical fitness, it's very specific. You know, we do it the same time every year, if I have any issues throughout the year, they're addressed at that time with the individual and documented.
Go ahead, please.
Is there anything in there that is contrary to what you do?
Nope. And this here?
Yeah.
No, it's just not as specific.
Okay, so this is more general compared to what you do?
Correct.
Okay.
There are things, go ahead.
Well, just in terms of, so this serves two purposes, one, it's a, it's a performance evaluation tool, and then it spells out if you get X score, that equates to this as a merit pay increase, so then the other thing to consider is, assuming that you allow the chief to continue with the process that he's using, do you then find a way to tie it to a merit pay increase? Because again, this is like a two-part policy.
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
You know, as far as asking for merit for any of our personnel, their individual evaluations will reflect why, I think that's what we did off the last round. You know, I spell out specifically what it is that they're outstanding and why I would believe that they would deserve merit for it. You know, I've never believed in rewarding somebody for just showing up for work.
No, it's expected.
Yeah, if they're coming in and they're just doing their 40 hours and they're doing, you know, right where they're supposed to be doing, okay, that's where they're going to stay. That's when they go above and beyond, take on extra responsibilities, things of that nature. You know, structure responsibilities that benefit the police department and outside of the agency give us a good name by, for instance, I sent Sergeant Liberty up to the Milton PD on Sunday to train all their people in flagging, which is required by the federal government in order to be able to do traffic details and construction details. That looks good for us, so, and, you know, within our, we're all small agencies for the most part, that's how we help each other out. If I don't have a firearm instructor, I get one from Barrington, and if they don't have somebody who knew car seat inspections, we'll send Annie or Brian up.
The only, sorry, the other consideration is the timing, I think you do yours in December.
Yeah, the beginning of December, I can change that.
And this calls for it being done in September, and that's just to try to tie it more closely with the budget process?
Yes, and I could certainly do that.
So, to, to make it all kind of part of the budget process.
If somebody's been outstanding from January to September to warrant a merit, I don't see them falling off the mark from September to December, so I could certainly do it in September.
Okay.
Okay. Let me see what, Archie, please.
I agree with him, ours is just more specific to the job. If I read that right and the merit's done by the scoring, I can change the scoring, that's easy enough, and I can change when we do it as well. But that was my only concern, is that, I read through that and I think it's great, but at the same point, I've been using this format for a couple of years now, and it's more job-specific to what the employees are doing in the fire department.
Thank you. What's your thoughts?
I like policies that apply to all the employees, not just this group and then not that group, so I don't know if we can, I, I hear what both of them are saying, and I think, I think that's appropriate, so I don't know if maybe we can incorporate what they do into this policy as well.
That's what I was thinking, if we could let them do what they normally do, because it is more specific, but blend it into the protocol stuff that's involved, changing the dates that were suggested, that we can try to get all evaluation at the same time, so I'd like to direct the town administrator to see if they can work a blended statement a little bit better. So, I agree, and the jobs are very specific between fire and police, and they should be evaluated under those particular ground rules instead of making it more general. But this, the overall application, I mean, the evaluation as it stands would be used for the department heads, the chiefs as well. It's just the work is for the chiefs. Will Gunnar, more descriptive. All right.
Okay, so I'll work with the chiefs.
You'll work with the chiefs?
Trying to blend them into one policy.
Get a little bit of blended contact.
Okay?
Thank you.
As the board knows, we had a hearing last week, Stratford County Courthouse with Veterans Resort Chapel, heard before a judge. We probably will not get a decision out of that until at least September, which is frustrating, but that's just the way these things work. Mr. McDonald said again in the open courtroom, a number of the statements that he has made in writing and publicly regarding allegations as to what the select board said vis-à-vis not wanting homeless vets in the town of Lee. What he said in the court was a little bit different than what I've heard in the past. Two things, one, he named a name, actually said who said it, but that the other selectmen were there and agreed with him, and then it was a private conversation, because of course, we said, well, there's no, there's no record of this ever having been said in a public meeting, either the planning board or a select board. So what he said in the court was that it was a, it was a private conversation, which I still suspect is not accurate. So at one time, the select board had talked about making a, some kind of a public statement to, to counter this, and I don't know whether you still want to consider that, or, you know, he's, he's going to continue to say all kinds of things, and I, you know, I don't know how much credence anybody gives when he says things like, the select board, you know, doesn't care about veterans, I find that very hard to believe that anyone would actually...
I thought we had that drawn up.
You had something drafted, and then we wanted to see whether we could find anything that even came remotely close in any of the public boards, not just the select board, but the planning board and zoning board, and then we didn't address it after that.
Okay.
And now, again, the statement has shifted, and now apparently it was made in a private conversation.
Well, I think it's important that we do put a statement out, so we should pull that draft back up again and put it on for, for further discussion.
Yeah.
And obviously, I think the total board has said this before many times, that we support our veterans, you know, in the town of Lee, there's no question about it, I want this statement brought forward.
Okay, thanks. I think that is everything.
Okay. Item nine, I move to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Discussion, hearing on all, in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Put your side in it.
Sign it.
There we go.
Wait.
Oh my gosh.
This is over there.
Give me your trash, Mr. Brown.
That's not the reason. You ready for next? That's not the reason.
Just want to see if you're paying attention.
I'm paying attention.
That's what we want.
I must say, this is something...
I'll give you this one for that one, Dave.
Okay. Maybe I didn't want to pay this one.
It's a little dark.
Here are the minutes. I move to accept the public and non-public meeting minutes from May 22, 2017.
Second.
Any other discussion? Hearing on all, in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Motion moving into non-public session, New Hampshire, RSA 91-a colon 3 to a personnel fileable.
Second.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. LaCors?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thanks a lot.
Aye.
Okay, where are we? Miscellaneous unfinished business, I think before we went into non-public, said that we discussed the issue associated with appointing someone to the Oyster River School District Board, school board vacancy. We've all had a chance to read the material that was presented to us at this point, I mean, I looked over all of these records, and it was nice that some people were here to actually talk about the, their interest in the, the school board itself, and I think most of the candidates, well, all the candidates are qualified in one way or another. My feeling at this point, I probably am leaning towards Mr. Sisneros.
What did you last name, Brian?
Second time I got it right.
Okay.
All right, yeah, I tried to get it right. That's why I'm leaning towards, at this point, I'd like to have any conversation, any other points? Are you in agreement?
Ask Mr. Brown.
Mr. Brown?
Well, my, my position is, I think all, all three of them are certainly qualified to move on to the school board, but my concern is that since it's just a one-year position of which... of which there's, what, nine or 10 months left, that Anne Wright, it's just easier for her to come into a board that's already in session, understanding, if you look at the list of committees she's served on, in the history, where she's already served on the school board, gone through three budget cycles on the school board. So it just seems to me that the transition for the nine-month period until they go up to full election would be a little bit more, a little bit more productive with Anne Wright going on to the board.
Mr. Buck.
I'm in concurrence with you, Mr. LaCourts, because I think Mr. Sisneros-
Sisneros.
Sisneros.
Brian.
It's getting worse.
Brian.
How about Brian?
Brian, Brian, Brian. I think he would be a better choice. I want a fresh pair of eyes on the board, and I was impressed with his financial background. So I think, especially the budget, I think there's enough people on the board that can look at the academic side of things, but I would like his financial eyes to look at the budget and the financial stuff that happens on the particular board. So that's why I would like to agree with you and propose his name to, and I propose, appoint him to fill the vacancy.
Therefore, I move to appoint Mr. Brian Sisneros to the vacancy to represent the town of Lee, the Orange River School Board.
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Not in favor?
Aye.
Two to one? Carries, congratulations, sir. Will you accept the nomination?
I will.
The appointment, excuse me. Then I'll instruct the town administrator to instruct a letter to make the appointment to, you know, to the school board superintendent. Congratulations, sir. Appreciate the effort.
Thank you.
So just wait to hear from the school?
Yep, or us, depending on where you get sworn in, assuming it's at the school. But we'll figure that out.
All right. Thank you for your willingness, sir.
Thank you so much. Anything else for this board at this time?
But-
What was that? What was that? They're still on camera.
I know.
Okay.
People can read lips, too.
Is there anything else for this board at this time?
Um, the, just a quick update from the facilities committee. We've gone through, looking at the space for the town hall, reduced that space a little bit, some. We looked at the-
Does that mean you reduced the footprint?
Okay. Well, from what the architect recommended, to the 5,000 square feet. So done that with those two sections. What we haven't done, because I believe, I don't want to put words in their mouth, but from our representative, the library is not moving in terms of their size. So we're going to conduct the same kind of process we did with the town hall and the historical society town hall section. We're going to do the same thing with the library. So we're going to go through and look at all the space recommendations and see if there's any place we can make some reductions. Because right now, we're looking at 3.2 to 3.5 million. That's just in terms of expense. At some point coming up soon, we're going to identify revenue sources, potential revenue sources. That doesn't say that the board can't do whatever they want, but I think we need to identify, at least the committee needs to identify, potential sources, maybe the bond, maybe using some of the fund balance, and definitely in terms of monies that are in the accounts that are designated for the library already, and also the donation.
What is the 3.2 to 3.5 million? What's that for? Which scenario is that for?
That's for scenario number of 2D, because right at the moment, we have not had any indication from the church in terms of the area name, in terms of buying that land. And as you remember, the backups plan is if 2D fails because we don't have that church properly, we're going to option number five, which is the town hall over here at C O Street. That's where we're at at the moment. So, but making progress. We should get within our deadline and make a presentation to us. That's the only thing I had to update on, so.
John, Mr. Brown?
Uh, next week, for a few days, I will be in the manager's conference in Key.
Okay. And one last thing, what are we moving with respect to training for department heads? We were going to-
I had a conversation, I haven't heard back from her. Anne Driscoll has taken a full-time job, so she's no longer available. So I said, well, please. So she wrote back and said she can recommend one of her friends. So I wrote back and say, would you possibly be able to do it if it was not during the work week? And I don't know if that's something that's possible. I don't know how tied we are to Anne Driscoll, but yeah, she is not to return my call, uh, not my email, excuse me. So yes, so I don't know if we are available to do it on like a evening or a weekend or something. I don't know if the environment is going to say, you know, heck without, we're not doing that, but we can also have her-
She might be able to recommend somebody.
Oh, she said she would.
Oh, okay.
But that's, I haven't heard back from-
Okay.
After that, so, but yeah, that's where it is.
Okay.
So I'll bugger again, but-
Bugger again, see what happens.
I think what it is, she's just wicked stressed out in terms of her new job. She decided enough of this consultant stuff, she wants a real job, because she's getting older and doesn't want to have to deal with finding work and-
Yes.
All of this stuff. Plus she gets benefits now, so can't blame her, but.
The, the deadline for the facilities committee now is September or August?
August.
August.
So they'll bring you-
I'm just a little concerned about, is there, is there something, do we know, if there's something on the town hall that needs to be taken care of before we go into another winter cycle? That's, you know, just, just to be sure we don't get in the middle of wintertime and have something.
Well, we've been keeping up with the maintenance on those particular, the only thing that's, that's an issue, and I don't, I don't know, in terms of the, the roof on the annex, because it's in terrible shape. I remember last year we postponed it because we thought this was happening, but now we're into another cycle. That's the only thing, I don't know. But still-
I just want to mention that we might want to-
But still, in all the scenarios we're talking about, the annex goes away. It's gone.
Yeah.
And the only thing that we've heard in terms of some people complaining, and I think that's something the legislative body would have to discuss or vote on, is if we move it. Potentially, one of the things we've talked about is moving to Little River Park. The bays are still there. They had, the original fire station was a three-bay fire station, so when they renovated it, they just filled in those openings, so it's relatively easy to open them back up again. You could have a garage at Little River Park. Because the thing is, the, the generator that's sitting in the hobo shed, the tool shed, has to go someplace. It's on a big trailer, so you could stick down in one bay, put some stuff in from Little River Park. That's just a thought, but moving a building is expensive.
And it was cheaply built to begin with.
Okay. So that's something that's going to be brought to the board in terms of, you know, I don't know where we want to go with that in terms of recommending, just get rid of it, or you move it.
Control burn.
I've been told that, but the fire department is not, they don't do that anymore.
They don't do that?
No, I checked into that. They don't like to do that anymore.
Practice, you know?
So.
Enjoy those things.
So that's something that'll come, and we'll have to decide how, you know, we just tear it down, or we move it, or, because we have a general idea in terms of the cost to move to Little River Park. So we're talking about $25,000, is it worth it?
Yeah, wow. Yikes.
And does everything squirt away for Roger's retirement party?
Twenty-
Well, for the 29th, 5:30, we're working on it.
Yeah.
Um, we're working on it. So do we want to open it up to boards, committees, and commissions, or no?
I'm, I'm not in favor of the 100 people that Roger-
No, no.
Okay. Because conceivably, you could get a pretty significant number of people.
And do we have to identify a source of funds for this expense?
Well, we could. Well, we've way overspent-
Yeah.
The line item. Let me take a look at the budget with Joanne, and we'll figure out where we can get it from, or what we can offset it with.
It shouldn't be too, too much.
Yeah, you want something reasonable, I don't want, well, you feed 100 people.
Right.
So, so again, it's town employees-
Yes.
The select board-
Yes.
And that's pretty much it.
Well, Roger gets to bring his wife.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Yeah, no, that's, yeah, that's it.
I don't want to bear Quinn's wrath when she finds out she wasn't-
Oh, that'd be too good.
I knew there'd be an exception.
An exception.
Okay.
And just let us know, maybe if that causes a problem or something, I don't know.
Yeah, okay.
Well, it shouldn't cause a problem.
Well, if we've forgotten somebody, I don't-
I just wondered whether, for example, you wanted to have the banks, just because I think that the-
The who?
The Jim and Mary Ann Banks.
Oh, well, he's on the plan, a zoning-
He's a zoning board.
He's a zoning person, so.
I know, but you just said not opening it up to boards, committees, and commissions.
Oh, did we just say that?
That's what you said.
That's what you said. Oh, I didn't, no. I meant not the 100 people that Roger wanted.
Well, I understand that, but if we open it up to all of the boards, committees, and commissions-
Oh, I think it goes to 100. Oh, I see.
Or it could go to 100.
Well, how many do we think will actually show up, though?
We just need to know, because if we're going to do that, then we do need to get our RSVPs, so.
This thing is blowing up in her face, isn't it? We should have cookies and milk.
Well, after you invite them, you can't uninvite them, so.
Well, I haven't sent anything to the boards, committees, and commissions.
I know, but I don't want us to get in a situation, oh, everybody from the boards and commission, and of course, they're going to bring their spouses, and then we've got 300 people sitting there waiting for-
I got great kids.
Yes, you can bring the cute ones on. I don't remember what her name is, but.
Oh, Charlotte.
So we're, so we're not extending it?
I think we're still talking about it.
Okay.
We haven't made a formal decision.
Well, we meet again on the 19th.
Well, you need to know before that.
Yeah, and that's 10 days before it, so.
What, we're going to do, what, grilling hamburgers, hot dogs, so on and so forth?
Sides, sides, yeah.
So providing food. I've had a couple people while I was at the transfer station saying, you know, we're, the transfer station without Roger is, you know, that'd be so different, and so and so forth. And these, you know, these were not necessarily town employees, so it seems to me it's going to be difficult to say no boards, committees, commissions, because a lot of those people are close friends with, with Roger. They're going to want to attend, that's all I'm saying.
The other thing is you can just bag that idea, you know? You just have a cake and some stuff inside the public safety complex, just an opening from seven to nine, we've done that kind of thing before, people can come and go. And, you know, instead of going through all the wrath of a cookout and everything else, it'd probably be a hell of a lot easier.
So if we were to have a cake, and then like cookies and punches, stuff like that?
Yeah.
Then you could say, boards and commissioners could show up.
Yes.
So we'd have to be worried about the 100 and-
Right, so it's going to be more of an open house?
More of an open house, I guess.
So are we still doing it at the pavilion, or are we doing it here?
At the public safety complex, here.
All right, let's do it, well, is that room free downstairs on the 29th?
It's a Thursday?
Yeah.
No.
Yeah, probably not, when we look.
Well, I mean, that's training for fire.
Oh, yeah, so it's not.
Because it'd be, that's the easiest part, to have people to come and go.
Or you could pick another night, maybe.
Yeah. That's what I'm leaning towards, I'm, I'm thinking about the, the cookouts on nights and everything else, but at the same time, it just gets, who's going to do all the cooking? Hell, that-
Tom or Eastwood.
Denise will do it.
Tom, Eastwood.
Tom, Eastwood.
Well, nothing stops us from doing both, thinking out of the box. You could have a small food thing Thursday night, and then maybe Friday night, you can invite the public and have a cake and stuff.
I mean, are we starting a, a tradition here? Does Tom Minister, which I-
I think we need to do something. I don't know, sure, what do you think, so?
10 years and I've-
Is he still, is he still doing his lemonade and cookie thing at the transfer station?
I don't know, I haven't talked about it.
That's what he talked about doing for the people who come in, like you said-
And bullets for the dogs.
Long-term members of the community, and, you know, that type of thing. I'm kind of leaning towards the, the cake and the lemonade and, and cookies and things, and have it like an open house type of thing. Kind of did that for you, didn't we, Joe?
Mm-hmm.
It was basically, what, seven to nine a night, or something like that, or six to eight or something?
I honestly don't remember, was it at night?
Yeah, it was at night, I remember that, it was in the evening.
Geez, if you had, I would have said it was in the afternoon, but maybe.
Yeah, yeah, it was just open.
So we have to pick a different date?
Yep. Pick something in the evening.
In the evening, yeah?
Yeah, I think that's bottom of this thing.
From seven to nine, that seems late for cake.
Really?
Well, I don't know.
Well, we all still have to see if Roger can make it, because it's no surprise if he can't make it, so.
Right.
How about-
Six to eight?
How about we decide what we want to have, and then we can decide online kind of, after she finds out if there's a room and when it is, and if Roger can make it.
I'm leaning towards the cake and cookies, there we go.
Can we do that?
Yep.
So let's decide what we're doing, and then Denise, can you find out from Roger if a room's free, and if Roger's ready, and then we'll go from there, and then if it isn't, you can let us know.
The last person retired, what did you find?
Who's the last person retired?
I'm asking these two.
Well, Alan retired, but he didn't want anything.
He didn't want, Eric, that's in there.
Bill's retired, he didn't want anything.
He doesn't want anything.
So who was the last person before that?
Chet sort of retired.
Yeah, it was a different story.
Didn't do anything with that.
No, that's what I'm asking, I'm just trying to go backwards a little.
And Wally Dennis, who retired?
It was way before-
You mean Alan Dennis?
No, Wally, he said, but he was a-
He was not-
Not a town employee.
He wasn't an employee.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so really, there's no example out there, so it frees us to do what we want, is what I'm trying to do, so we just any precedence, so if we go with the milk and cookies and the cake, which seems like a reasonable thing to do.
So whatever you're doing, you're going to do it next year at this time anyways.
That's exactly right, so we're going to set a precedence at this point, so why does it do it that way?
Well, we're not going to do that for a regular-
I want cake and cookies.
I've been here for 30 years.
I would think you'd do something more.
Yeah.
We probably have brownies, too.
Well, we don't need to decide that, we just need to know what we're doing.
So let's-
He might not retire, you know how it is.
Oh, yes, yes, we'll see, because he might do what Bill Stevens wants.
Yeah, that's correct, he might.
So how about if you get us one of those ginormous sheet cakes-
You got it?
With the town seal on it.
Yep.
Happy, well, you guys figure out the words.
Yes.
And then let's get some punch and-
Yep.
Suck the drink.
Yep.
And let's get some cookies, you guys can pick what kinds.
Yeah, I like it.
If they're a kind I don't like, you're in big trouble, and let's go with that, and you'll let us know what rooms available and Roger can-
We'll do it at the public safety complex.
Yep.
And if you think the afternoon's better, that's fine with me, it doesn't make a difference, whether it's late afternoon or evening, it doesn't-
I think five to seven.
Yeah, I'm thinking five to seven.
So when they get-
So you get off of work, yeah, that's probably a great idea, yeah.
Okay.
And then the board of selectmen will have a few words?
We'll have a few words.
And do we have a little-
We're working on it.
One more thing, yeah.
All right, I think that's where it's all, I think we've made a decision. Mr. Brown, we've made a decision.
We can't move it up, though, because of what I am working on.
Right.
The what, I'm sorry?
Well, we can't really move it up closer because of what I am working on.
Okay, that's fine.
What flavor, what flavor cake are we going to have?
Chocolate and vanilla, two separate for the chocolate people and the vanilla.
Yeah, two sides, chocolate, vanilla.
Ice cream?
Ice cream.
Ice cream?
Okay, ice cream.
Wow, this is getting elaborate.
Listen, don't ask Eric for the leftover ice cream that we have.
No, and his leftover cake from the 250, don't let him come into the bag.
Oh, is there still some?
He's bringing that ice cream cups up all the time.
But it's from December, it's only five months old.
I think they're still stashed in the fire department.
It was, what do you call it, freezer burn, those ice cream cups or something?
He'd get rid of them at election, and I didn't want one, because-
No, I didn't want one either.
What's the matter with it? It's, you know, it adds to the gas potential system.
All right, well, we'll figure out a date that we can get this off.
Let's, let's move on, I guess.
All right, we're done, anything else? Move to adjournment.
Thank you.